Okay, we're gonna call each team in your order. We are gonna forego the pledge of allegiance, but we do need to do another roll call. And please add Mr. Rittenhouse to the roll call. For committee of the whole.
Mrs. Bell?
Here.
Steve Rittenhouse? Mrs. Jerk?
Here.
Mrs. Leonie?
Here.
Mrs. Scott? Yes? Mrs. Strobel?
Yes.
Mrs. Thompson?
Here.
Mrs. Albright?
Here.
And Mrs. Olson?
Here.
Now, you press it.
Okay, announcements, I do not believe we have any agenda edits. There will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss negotiations. And it's time for the superintendent, Dr. Cooper.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to share with the board, started out at the beginning of last week, had the opportunity to visit, obviously, all the buildings, but spent some time in the middle school, in one of our middle school teacher's social studies classrooms, presenting to some of the students in that class regarding travel experiences. I was able to share with them that I've had experiences in Europe and South America. So it was a pretty exciting time to be able to get in front of the students. I'll be attending our first of four 2022-23 school year Committee of Legislative Action. It's at BCIU tomorrow morning. It's the first one of four this year. Also, we'll be attending the AASA Certification Alumni Consortium, the end of this week, on Thursday and Friday. And very excited with the anticipation of this evening's student board report. And a very special surprise is gonna be shared. And I won't steal any thunder, so I'm excited to see what's going on there. So that's all I have this evening, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. And I'm gonna throw it over to the student board press.
Hello, boys. So, please, of the student board, we want to take a very special presentation from Hannah Huddelson and Megan Duffy on Special Olympics.
Ready? Okay. How are you guys? Where are you going today?
And I'm Hannah Huddelson.
Let's go.
Today, we are presenting on our experience at the USA Special Olympic Games. Megan and I got selected to be the two representatives for the state of PA to attend the YLE, which is the Youth Leadership Experience. So, we are going to go through what we experienced down in Florida.
So... Um, okay. The balance is helped to grow together and close by the many teachers, as well called homeschoolers, who were able to live in different all other country and hear along their experiences.
So, the first day, we had a media day. And this day, we got to interview all the states from all over the place. We interviewed specifically San Diego, because, of course, and Oregon. This allowed us to work on our communication skills.
Yeah. So, Charlotte, Charlotte, Sophia, and me, Cora, Megan, and I, we took videos in central and in PA's stores. And we also went in and stayed with them, flash back, yeah, okay.
And then our last day, we did our Young Athletes Challenge. So, we went to an elementary school, or well, a middle school by the ESPN zone. And we helped kids of all abilities participate in different activities, like obstacle courses, soccer, and a jumping roulette.
So, we start with our basketball group, Eric from regions in PA, and one athletes in Middle Square. My mother and girls come in.
So, we planned our action steps after leaving Florida with our friends at Special Olympics Pennsylvania. And we wanted to have our three action steps, which were starting a unified ambassador group for regions in Pennsylvania. We wanted to start our own young athletes from the middle school level of Berks County, because we are so inspired by what they did down in Florida. And then our last step, we wanted to start a social media presence for unified ambassadors, so we can show every school what each other are doing and we can support one another.
So, potential words, please, um, would you click here and link this question below with the number sign, and hit the link and go to some videos? So, yeah?
So, the link here, Megan and I got interviewed by one of the local stations down in Florida. And we thought it'd be a cool way to show our recap. So, we hope you enjoy.
Yep. Thank you.
These kids and volunteers are participating in a Young Athletes Festival. It's an event put on by Special Olympics that allows local kids, both those with and without intellectual disabilities, age two to seven, to sharpen their basic sports skills.
Running, walking, hopping, all kinds of basic sports skills. And so that when they turn eight years old, they are then eligible to be a competitive Special Olympic athlete.
This integrated group of students is made up of kids attending summer school programs at several Orlando elementary schools. Special Olympics volunteers helped Catalina Elementary set up the event. This event isn't just about having fun, although it is a lot of fun. There's an important lesson to be learned today about inclusion. Hannah Huddelson and her friend Megan Duffy are a great example of two friends with different abilities learning to appreciate each other.
Hannah, she's a good friend.
Oh, Megan Duffy is my best friend, actually. We have done everything together. She is my rock. I don't know what I would do without her in my life.
As neighbors, they've been friends for years. And now, they've been paired up by Special Olympics to be developed as young leaders. They're learning together how to host and organize young athletes festivals like this one back in their home state of Pennsylvania. They hope their pairing inspires.
I hope people understand the idea of unity and how treating everybody with kindness is a really big idea.
It's really before.
And kindness mixed in with a lot of fun is an especially good idea. In Orlando, Amanda Duke Swestine News.
Okay, so that was our summary of our games in Florida. But tonight, we have some exciting news to share with everyone. As you know, Megan and I were asked to be a representative for the state of PA. We were selected because Dade Moon High School's school committee had said yes to becoming a unified champion school. A summary of the Unified Champion School. The Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools program is aimed at high-promoting social inclusion through intentionally planned and implemented activities affecting system-wide change. With sports as a foundation, the three-component model offers a unique combination of effective activities that equip young people with the tools and trainings to create sports classrooms and school climate of excellence. These are the school climates where all students of all abilities feel welcome and are routinely included in and feel part of all TPI's opportunities and functions. Last March, Dade Moon Area High School was asked to complete an application as a candidate for the prestigious honor of being named a Special Olympics Unified National Banner School. This is the most prestigious award that Special Olympics National awards. For a school to be a candidate, schools must demonstrate excellence and sustainability in ten national standards of excellence. During the application review process, PA State Special Olympic officials first review the application that the national certified body of key educational leaders select the best of the best. I went to thank Sona, Special Olympics North America, and SOPA, Special Olympics Pennsylvania, for saying yes to our application. Today, Dade Moon Area High School was notified that Dade Moon Area High School is a 2022 National Banner School. We stand united with only 110 other schools in the country who have became leaders in the inclusion revolution. We are the first school in Berks County and surrounding greater than High Valley to receive this award. They muted Dade Moon Area High School to help empower our students, then getting out of their way and choose to include. We cannot wait to see how other students want to choose to include. Thank you.
Way to be there. Excellent. I didn't know that we got our notification. I'm really happy about that. And now, I would like to know if anyone has any comments that they'd like to make about items on the agenda tonight before we get into the agenda. Thanks, folks. Okay, is here and done? Finance? Does anybody have anything that they would like to discuss under finance? I don't see anything out of the ordinary. So, I mean, is there anything anybody wants to discuss under finance? It all looks pretty straightforward. Any public comment on finance? Programs? They tend to turn the volume down in this room, so the bell wouldn't make us all jump out of our seats. Almost everything on this agenda for programs are different trips for the year. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? A public comment? Personnel? Retirements? Resignations, we got one. Leaves? Three appointments? Many? Can I ask how close we are to filling all of our positions at school that were open this summer?
The voting meeting this evening, you approved two. We are still in the process of interviewing for two school psychologists. And did have some interviews on Friday. Those are the last two, other than a few long-term subs that are anticipated coming up through some leaves of assets that's coming up in the fall here. Those two are the only permanent remaining.
Okay, any comments, questions, concerns on personnel from the board? Any comments from the public? Presentations by board members, secretary correspondence? Yeah, we've had a lot of...
We have.
We've had a lot of correspondence about busing. If it was about a specific issue, the board did their best to escalate to the proper person within the, in the school district or within, with our service provider to get them a resolution. Some of those resolutions are still TBD, obviously. But, um, other than that, no other real correspondence to discuss. Intermediate unit board report, Mr. Jerk?
So, the intermediate unit meeting basically dealt with HR issues and contract agreement ratification. The only one really to make for us would be ratifying an agreement that we scattered by 7, 2, and 4 services to students who retired in eligible school, but very expensive. Public schools, that's probably a great perspective, while it's first one to do.
Thank you. And I did want to ask Mr. Jerk, when is the next meeting? Okay, no, that's okay. One thing I would like it if you have a moment to thank BCIU publicly for the support that they provided with their grief counseling assistance during this time. I would like to pass that along personally. BCTC, Ms. Thompson?
All right, we met on August 24th. Enrollment in 2017 was 1,600 students. They are now at 20, or 2,031 students. And most of the programs are at or above capacity. And the 21, 22 school year, the 2,041 certifications earned by students. And then the articles of agreement that were in the committee of the hold that transportation starting 23, 24 school year will now be the responsibility of the school district. Each of the districts with a 5% to 6% tuition reduction hopefully will be not.
And that's every, that's gonna be for every school district?
Every school district. And the next meeting is October 24th.
Okay. Legislative board, is there anything, Mr. Strobel?
Give me. No.
Okay.
Tomorrow, the next meeting's tomorrow.
Okay.
Is there a tax meeting this month?
Under other reports? Okay. All right, so then there's my, any public comment on presentations by board members? Moving on to enrollment. Numbers per enrollment are starting to look a lot more like pre-COVID numbers. Any comments from the board on enrollment statistics? Any public comment on enrollments? Moving on to curriculum and instruction, Ms. Albright?
Our last meeting was August 22nd. Mrs. Owens ran the meeting for me in my absence. Anything you wanna do other than let's list them? No? No, I can do it. There was a new staff induction was talked about, the math K-12. This meeting to look at vertical alignment. They discussed the first day of school for teachers and professional staff, and they gave an update on the summer professional learning. The next meeting is October 24th at 6:00 AM.
Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments, concerns from Mrs. Albright from the board? Any public comment? Moving on to extracurricular, Ms. Bell?
We had a meeting this evening, and we talked about fall sports, which are, we're on the way through. We've seen many great participation in middle school. One of the items we discussed tonight was the proposal, which we have to bring up for the general meaning, the soundboard purchase and donation from the music booster, which is nice, digital tires and sound, basically the conveyor, soundboard, melted down on fire.
Yes, okay.
So, they graciously, and it's very painful, music and services, donated the new door, which will be very comfortable. And of course, having that with such high sound, we will have to improve that.
And let me just, for the, the, um, the business end of that, there weren't enough people in the, that attended the extracurricular meeting to vote that out of committee as approved. So, I'd like it to be added to the added consent items for next board meeting. It just won't be designated as approved out of committee. So... Okay, and last meeting? Uh, the 10th?
Yes.
Any, um, any questions, comments on extracurricular? Any comments from the public on extracurricular? Facilities and transportation?
Well, we had a meeting this evening, and facilities, the high school doors...
Nobody can hear you.
High school doors were completed. We need to improve for springer pump being replaced. The middle school has two sinkholes that are being voted now. Quite expensive, actually, definitely that one too. So, he's getting votes for those. We did like go Peter, we voted on that this evening. AIC library has a 4-ton leader that's quitting. It's quit, it needs to be replaced, so he's gonna get a vote on that. Currently, you're running 10-ton area, 5-ton, so. High school has a heat air cleaner that's still working, they're still working on, trying to repair it with, there's some of that goes, they're still working on. And River Rock has a leak in our air machine units. Still trying to determine what the extent of that leak is.
Okay.
When we went into transportation, we were second to the end, we're one to go.
Do it now.
We talked about transportation, we gave everybody the opportunity. We met, Chris came, Chris came up and did their, um, kind of game set, history of what's going on, where we're at, where we're going. And we had a portion of public comments.
And do you wanna give, for the folks that are in the board, or that weren't there, is there anything that you need to address from the meeting? From the report that we got?
I'd like a quick summary, because I was not able to make that meeting. I was working, but I'd like a summary of what was said.
I did take copious notes on the whole thing, but we do have a two-sided sheet we can provide you that will give you pretty much an update for the folks to talk about during the meeting.
The, my, so, anything I say that's wrong, someone's gonna correct me when I'm done. So, they are trying to improve their responsiveness to people who call. Emails should be close to, the expectation is that you should be getting an answer by the next business day. That's, that's not where we're at with phone calls. One thing that we are going to have to navigate right now, if you call the transportation company, Christ, and you get a call back, it's gonna show up for some people, your carrier's gonna tell you that it's a spam call from Punxsutawney, and so you might not pick up. And so, it's hard for us to determine how good we're doing at responding back to people when some people don't pick up. And, you know, so, messages are being left, but just be aware that that's happening. We are gonna try to figure out a way to fix it, but that's what's happening right now.
They also found a whole other process when there was somebody inside there, the secretary was taking the notes, they weren't being put through the proper process. So, that was a big piece in terms of getting back to them.
And hopefully, that should improve our, the response time that you're getting from Christ if you have issues. We understand that you, you should be able to accept that you'll get an answer by the next business day if you call back. And I know that's not happening very well. We have, there are drivers that have been brought online, three drivers have brought online this week. We're still about five to seven drivers away from a full complement of what they expect for drivers. We know that some folks, the expectation is not that your kid sits on, is on the bus for over an hour. And routing changes will hopefully be happening to make that, to bring those numbers down. We might have to address those individually. But right now, the line share of the time inside the office for the, for the Christ staff is spent fixing stops that are actually, have actually been identified as dangerous. So, those have had to take priority, but we are trying to fix those issues. Did I hit, I didn't hit everything?
One of the things we mentioned was this kind of the automobile industry today. If you wanna buy a truck, you can't get them if the chips aren't available. So, an awful lot of things have occurred during this process from the time they created them on. And specifically, in addition to the buses having some challenges they've ordered, as many, not all were set up because there was other manufacturing issues which are across the board, they're having trouble, they were having trouble in getting the cameras for inside because it's a technology issue again. You know, Scott Matts, same thing we had with all the routers in the school were having challenges getting them, but they're working and they're going to be put in.
And I will say that the, the, um, the cameras, the contract with the camera provider is with the school district, correct?
That's correct, it's with Bus Patrol.
And we approved signing on with Bus Patrol at the same time that we approved signing on with Christ. But I did not get to sign a, an executed contract with the, with Bus Patrol until the 30th, I believe, of, of, of August, because that contract went back and forth with our lawyers and their lawyers all summer. I'm not saying that as an excuse, I'm just saying that that particular issue was not created by the bus company. We, you know, and now, we are in a situation where we are on the list to get our, to get our cameras in the buses. And so, that is something that we just have to wait until they have the equipment. As soon as they have the equipment, they, they tell us that they can get it done in three to four days. So, I just wanted to make, make that clear that that was, that was on, that was on us. You know, but our lawyer, when he says this contract doesn't protect the district enough, I listen to him and, because, you know, that's, that's our, that's the, you know, that's the, them, you know, protecting the liability of the school district and protecting the financial interests of the taxpayers. So, I don't know, was there anything else that we needed to discuss that went?
I think of.
I will be putting out some information based on the discussion that was had in the transportation committee. I would hopefully have it out by noon tomorrow on the school website, so it can be available, some of the known issues and what our plan is and timeline to fix them. Doesn't mean that that's gonna be the solution for everybody, for every individual issue. However, that is the goal. So, is that fair? Okay. And next meeting is? October 10th?
Okay.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Strobel from the facilities committee? Public comment? Yep?
I just, I don't know if I misheard, is there two sinkholes at the middle school or one?
Two. And my, our understanding is that, um...
Blocked off.
Yeah, it's blocked off. I, I just heard about it today. I don't go to the middle school every day, so I'm gonna, I asked Mr. I, I asked Mr. Wethers, can you send me some photos of where they are, so, I know, 'cause I, I'm, you know, that was the first I heard of it, I mean, that's what the committee meeting is for, to tell me what's going on, so.
He said it was a handicap turn spot.
Oh, great. Have we, have we allocated a different spot for handicaps with that happening?
Yes, he's, uh, expanded the spaces that are available for handicap. Uh, they are adjacent to some of the drainage, um, what's happening, yeah, the water's infiltrating down where the casing is, and wasn't appropriately, um, meshed in with, uh, with the tie rods.
Okay.
I do have the, um, next meeting, uh, is, uh, February, October 10th.
Okay. So, any, any public comment on, um, facilities?
I do.
Yep?
So you said with the buses, um, well, we asked... Supply and demand, you said that they were ready for this, and they already pre-ordered many of buses to supply for our district, correct? So why is there a shortage for cameras? They should've been ready, and, just like contract said, have radios, buses, and cameras.
I don't know if you heard me, I said that the camera, the camera contract is with a separate company?
No, that was Bus, that's Bus Patrol, that's the one that's on the side, that's different.
No, the Bus Patrol was the entire system, fourteen cameras?
Yeah.
Both exterior and internal.
Okay.
Yeah.
So when you put out, um, Kreis, then you're stating that he'll have this bus camera on the side, but that's, um, school district, so that's...
That was a misunderstanding on my part, yeah.
And a misunderstanding of also when you stated about the numbers too, so there's a lot of misunderstandings that come from you.
Numbers, I don't understand.
Um, the RFP number, when you promised numbers?
I did, yeah, I, I, okay, I understand what you mean.
And then, yes, and then Cooper made a statement, and you said, "Oh, sorry, I, I misunderstood you."
Yes.
But there was no misunderstanding there.
That is your point. Thank you.
So I had a conversation with the assistant superintendent.
Can I ask, can I ask your, your first edition A?
Why, you didn't ask anybody else to me?
I know.
Okay, Wendy, please.
Okay.
So, I had a conversation with the assistant superintendent last week, and he guaranteed me that there were cameras inside of every bus, and that they're only missing the outside cameras, so is that not true?
The cameras are, the buses are not equipped with cameras.
So your suc, your assistant superintendent lied to him?
No, I didn't.
Because he, no, he did, because he...
Time out, man.
Excuse me, no, I didn't, I made a mistake. I misidentified, I thought they had cameras, I misidentified, we knew Bus Patrol was adding other ones, I made a mistake. I apologize for that mistake.
But you haven't, like, told anybody that, like, my daughter's bus almost flipped over on the first day of school, there's no way to prove it, except all the kids saying it, because there's no cameras inside the bus.
It flipped over?
It almost flipped over, because the bus driver was lying around corners, like, my child and a bunch of other children said it, so I know it's true, and they weren't even on the same bus stop.
Wow.
And I reported it and got nothing back from the bus company, the superintendent.
Police?
What, you want me, you want me to call the police and say...
No, I'm just asking if you...
No, I didn't call the police.
I'm not being, I just...
Well, I mean, I just got, I thought that was pretty rude, but whatever.
Excuse me? I didn't, I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
I said, I thought that was pretty rude, but, go ahead.
No, I'm, it was a simple question.
I did not call the police, do you want me to call the police and have my...
No, ma'am, I just, I just asked, if it was that dangerous, I, I would think, it's apparent.
Well, as soon as, I heard about it, I called everybody I should call.
Fair enough, I, I'm not trying to...
So, to clarify, there isn't bus, there isn't cameras on all the buses?
Correct. Anybody else? Yep?
Sorry, I just have a few questions, I'm Melanie Hensler, hi, ma'am. Um, I have a couple things about safety, um, so I wanna know what, what we are doing in regards to people being in the offices. I have tried to call multiple times over the last two weeks, um, and have not been able to obtain anyone in the office. I have also had my child miss the bus and come to the office, no one was there to let him in. Um, this is at the middle school, okay? It's been going on multiple times in the middle school. That is my first question, what are we doing about three to a seat when children are larger and in the middle schools are not able to sit? I've already been told that they are not allowed to move because of assigned seating, my child is falling into the middle of the aisle, not being allowed to switch because they are, um, assigned seating. They are also being told they are not to use their cellphones to tell their parents their schedules, that the, the cellphones need to be put away. When it comes to communicating with your parents, I think these children should be allowed to do that, especially when they cannot keep up with the schedules. That's about it, I have.
Yeah, okay.
Do we have any answers for any of that?
We will apply tomorrow, I, I, um, if, uh, some, some of the issues that you're bringing up, I, I think I'm gonna have to do a little bit of research on, okay?
Okay, but it's been two full weeks I've tried to get hold of the school for eight times, eight times.
And I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm not disagreeing with you.
But we can't put such a priority, and I, and I understand what you're saying, but we cannot put such a priority on the buses that we have so many parents or teachers outside there and not manning the office.
Fair.
That is a danger for the emergency preparedness, um, safety, bomb threats, anything that could happen to our children, and this, this busing situation is causing way more triple offense.
I hear you, thank you.
My name is Valerie Rhodes, I live in Weaver Town. Um, I used to work for New Roots, as you all know, and it has come to my attention, um, that of things that are being told to parents, as in, um, the previous contractors are to blame for this whole circus, um, that I personally erase bus routes, and that's why they're not prepared, or I put them in secret files. First off, I did Transponder, and I can tell you, there's no secret files. The only way that our routes could change is from whoever sat in Steve Biggers' staff's seat, that was a controlling monitor. I'm tired of hearing how, um, we were contacted and we refused to help. I personally am the only one who did transportation, I knew Transponder inside and out, and I can tell you, my phone did not ring, so I don't wanna hear how you guys all, you know, all of the very previous contractors didn't help us out. As for the routes, when you did the RFPs, you were given copies of all of our routes, so I don't wanna hear how you didn't know a special needs child needed to be picked up in a driveway because the mother had brain cancer. You had the routes, I made specific notes on every stop of everything special that needed to be done, and I, I still don't understand how these got messed up. The way Transponder works is you take the database and you merge it to the next year, all the students bump up a grade. All you had to do was open up all the routes, suck in all the kids that were standing there, add all the new ones, that's all you had to do. Don't try to blame us for this chaos. I blame this, because we stood up here and we begged you, and we told you this was gonna happen. You moved fifth grade up to the middle school, you moved second grade up to the intermediate center, this was gonna cause chaos on top of a driver shortage that is a nightmare since COVID. They may have been given an employee list of who worked for us, but I can tell you right now, ten of us drove every day that were family members and office staff. There were nine drivers who drove VOTEC, so almost twenty drivers that weren't going to go over there, because VOTEC drivers, they don't drive little kids, they drive a VOTEC run, and they went where the VOTEC runs went, so they're going down, nine people. You add on the ten, a bus that drove, and I don't know what you were expecting, were you expecting us to say, "Oh, go Team Kreis and go drive for them?", no, it wasn't gonna happen. We ran this transportation like a well-oiled machine, we have done the route for the past five years, routes that were supposed to be your responsibility.
Time.
But in August, we would get a phone call, and we'd have to come in and do the routes, and we never missed a route, and we were under staff every single day. So for you to be okay with this, that it's only ten days in, that's sad, it's really sad.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm Tatiana Reddier from Amity Township, uh, the only question I had was, whenever Kreis does get their official location and move the buses, um, are they prepared for rerouting based off of where they are leaving now, where now, leaving middle school, high school? So when they move to a new location, is that routing gonna be, um, ready on the day that they move the buses? Is it gonna help alleviate any kind of problems that we're having now with timing issues? Um, another question I had is, is Bus Patrol also responsible for GPS tracking buses? Um, is there GPS tracking currently in the buses, or are we waiting on that with the Uh, I heard that some of the activity runs are being covered by another company, uh, outside of Kreis, are they, um, do they have appropriate credentials to be calling school children? Um, have you checked them, or have they been approved? And, uh, my final concern is with, at the beginning of the year, everybody, all the kids have to fill out Limer, Limer cards for in case there's an evacuation, is Kreis aware of that, um, that we're near the power plant station, if there is an evacuation, are they prepared to handle that, since they're not from the local area, they're from Houskami? That's, that's all I have.
Thank you. Good job.
Thank you very much, um, anyone else?
What are you guys gonna do about, we all know Douglasville chit-chat is a cesspool, but can you please have transparency to your stakeholders, which are the taxpayers and the parents of this community? I, I think if you were be, if you were forthright and were honest with people, that that would help alleviate a lot of the drama that's going on, and being honest and telling them, "Look, you know what, we're just having a bad time, or even, like, the last meeting, somebody asked, a gentleman asked about the buses, and you guys looked at each other, and if you would've just said, 'We're working on it', that really gets worse."
True.
So be upfront and honest with people, 'cause it's gonna get even worse if this continues. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kathy, uh, I live in Douglasville, I have four children in the district. What I'm seeing here is just a lack of transparency and zero accountability. What would you have done if I had left my children at the school for two hours without you being able to get a hold of me at all, for over two hours? You would've called the cops, the cops, you would've called the police, I would've been arrested. Why are you not arrested? My children were on a bus for over two hours, two hours, I had to jump in a car and try to find the bus, my heart was racing, I didn't know where they were, I had no idea what was happening to them. Do you know what that's like? Do you have any idea? And you know what made it worse? Was at sick ten, I got a call from Ralph Flowers, telling me that my bus was gonna be an hour late, that's a slap in the face. And you know what was worse? Was the next day that I got an email that was lacking empathy for any of these parents here, telling us that it was based on a car wreck.
True.
Please, this is a circus, get your act together, be transparent.
True.
Tell us what's going on, be accountable. You know who makes a good, good leader? Someone who takes account for when they make a mistake. I had not hit some there.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
Absolutely.
My daughter was on that bus.
Then you should know.
You voted yes.
My daughter was on that bus, and I know that feeling.
But you voted for it, that was all booked in.
My daughter was on that bus, and I know that feeling.
Congratulations.
Yours is just as angry.
You didn't have a choice in it.
Anyone else? Okay, moving on to finance.
Can I ask a question at the boardroom?
Oh, absolutely.
Thank you.
On, on, on the transportation stuff, okay?
So he said that his kids were on the bus for two hours, my, my son's bus, and I know that we heard from a MacDill conception review.
Right.
Non-public school buses, why are they still, to this day, two-hour rides for these kids? That is my question with the district and with Kreis. It is not fair for these kids that they get picked up at 3:10 and they are not dropped off at their house until 5:10, that is, their schedules are up off time. Today, I know from my son's bus specifically, they were dropped off earlier because they didn't pick up the other school, but...
Right. It's because they're doing high, it's because they're doing high school and elementary and middle all on the same bus.
Well, yes, for less than four years with my son, five years, they've done the same thing, and it's not their memory, so, I'm just wondering why the non-publics are still two hours.
And they, and, you know, I, I agree, they shouldn't be, and, um, they are gonna have to be looked at, each of those, each of those routes are gonna have to be looked at to figure out...
I called last Wednesday, and I still have not gotten a solid answer. And these children deserve a solid answer.
Absolutely, they do.
Well, Kreis is here, they can answer.
True. Let Kreis answer, yeah.
Great for you.
Any, what's that?
We didn't listen to the meeting at five o'clock.
We did, Kevin.
I was working.
I thought it was another, another bus in the same way.
Yeah, I understand. Why?
I'm not telling you not to do that, I was, I was talking to Julie, I just mentioned...
He said we could've come to the five o'clock meeting, I was working.
I understand that, I'm not, I wasn't, I just said to Julie, I wasn't saying not for them not to answer, I said, "Please, don't attack me."
I, I answered your question, so...
Or they said to Julie that we do it over at five o'clock, and they should be, it's the same answer.
But, you know, for Ms. Leoni, you know, I'm, and I'm glad she reiterated that, because I didn't emphasize that when we talked about the report that we got, that, but they are, they're gonna have to look at, um, what can be done to shorten those runs.
I have the answers, okay, today, during meeting today, they talked about the non-public schools and how the problem's ever happened.
I understand that, but then I, then I came to this meeting and I found another non-public school, that's two hours, so I'm asking why we are not as important as the public school district is.
It's not that you're not important, but they said it's...
No, some public schools are on there for two, some public school students are on there for two hours.
But why are we even allowing kids to be on a bus for two hours?
I don't have the answer, I'm like, what are we...
These are, some of these kids are kindergarten, it's unacceptable.
They said, I agree, they said they were gonna go back, yeah, they're, I should have looked on that, that's what, they, what else can I say to them? I mean, they, they can't...
As a parent, as a parent, I would like an answer, and I still have not gotten that answer.
It's hard, I don't, I don't agree with it, it's too long, it's way too long, but what am I supposed to get at? I mean, they said they were gonna go back, agreed, but all the different things, they come up with a solution.
And they told me that on Wednesday.
Well, talk to the next meeting, Kreis.
The solution should've been before this happened.
Right, yeah.
Why is Tim Kreis here and not spoken a word?
And they told me that on Wednesday.
They'll talk the next meeting.
The solution should've been before this happened. Why is Tim Kreis here and not spoken a word?
Welcome to speak. Here we go. There we go. There we go.
Can we keep the propanity down to light zero maybe?
I'm sorry?
I asked you. No, not you.
Okay. All right, for what it's worth, first of all, I'm gonna apologize to you guys for lack of communication. Number one. Consistency in some of these routes. Children not being picked up. Ride times, start times. The bus patrol, gonna touch on that right now. I'll jump around a little bit here. The bus patrol, in our contract, we weren't providing cameras originally. So whoever looked at that is correct. But also, in the meantime, bus patrol has been very active with school districts because they capture the vehicle passing red lights on the school bus. The driver of the school bus essentially doesn't have to identify the driver when they're going around the bus. So they're automatically fined basically. It's a unique system and GPS comes along with that. Along with the steps for approval, local law enforcement can also approve the plan because they're part of the violation process and assessing the fines. So there's more steps to it than just school district approval. We're using another school district, so it's working very well. It's getting implemented here. That's the small delay there. Again, it comes with GPS. Two hours, totally agree. It's totally unacceptable. Yes, we were short drivers. Currently, we have a driver out with COVID. We have a lot of drivers in the pipeline right now that live and work in the community. We brought drivers in to help, but we're still five drivers short. That added to some of the delays on the routes. Yes, the routing is somewhat a mess. I'm not blaming the past contractor. They've done it for years. They live in the community, know the streets, the side roads. We had to be educated a little bit and we underestimated it, to be quite frank. I'm sorry it took to this point. I'm here, we're working hard on it. These people who work countless hours, sort of, that's worried. It's not because you're concerned about your own children. And the guy that had to chase down the bus for two hours, that's unacceptable. And I feel your pain. You know, you don't know where your kids are at. You gotta go find the bus. What happened? It's unacceptable. One thing I wanna reiterate, and it's very important, I get this out to you. It's not the responsibility of the drivers at all. Those drivers are giving it all. A lot of them live here. A lot of them care about your kids. Okay, it's not about them. Okay? We want a good work environment for them. There was unstableness at the beginning because we didn't have a facility. So the driver was uncertain whether to come workforce or not because they didn't even know how far to drive to get the bus. And as we all know, fuel was a factor for them. Until they knew we were going to stabilize ourselves, that was a factor in some of the decisions. Some of these drivers we hired even locally didn't come on board until a week or so before school started. By the time we got the credentials through, we were right at the cutting edge when school started, which prompted some of these vehicles to be in disarray and unserved on some of our routes. We are working to make it better. A lot of you check me out right in the web. You know, we got multiple schools. And it's been a very hot and tough two years for all of us. I don't wanna be the focal point here. I don't wanna cause tension here. I wanna do the right thing, work hard to make it better. I have nothing bad or good to say about the previous contractors. They really don't know it that well. But I know they live here as well. They took pride in their operations when they have it. And I do the same thing. I take everything to heart. And believe me, for what it's worth, I have a lot of sleepless nights as well. And it's not the administration's fault. It's not the board's fault. They elected us to do a job. We had so much time to put it together and there's places we actually failed at. But I'm not giving up on it. I owe you a lot of gratitude. Some of you have been very understanding that I'm not even here tonight. Okay, they haven't called. They've been patient. I've talked to a lot of parents. Okay? If my kid rides a bus for an hour and a half, I said, it's temporary. It's temporary. We're working on it. Thank you for saying it's temporary. Thank you for getting back to me. They're asking some lack of communication, our phone systems. It's like when we call you back, it's like a telemarketer, it's showing up. And I apologize for that. We had a temporary phone system, so it wasn't showing a local number. So some people, when we called back, didn't recognize it until we left the message. There's some mistakes made, definitely. Folks behind me, it's not their fault. The bug stops here. I wanna make it better and make it right. Give us a few days here, a few weeks. When I say that, I'm not gonna keep putting false promises out there. We need a week or two to get it better. We brought a consulting team in to look at the routing. Look at efficiencies and see if we can make it better without compromising safety and the ride times. No ride is acceptable at two hours per day. No ride's acceptable at an hour and a half a day. We'll make it better. Give us a chance to do that. We have top-notch drivers. They're dedicated, they're working hard. They're trying to help us any way they can and they take a lot of pride in serving this community. It's not just about serving us, it's serving their kids. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
And let me say, just because I've seen it out there on social media, the, um, the consulting firm that Kreis hired to help analyze and optimize routing. It's no cost to the district. So, um, just because I've seen people say, ask, ask a question.
Sally Rhodes, County Township. I have one question. Why would you try and fix something that wasn't broken? They don't know these runs. Why would you put these kids, every student, without cameras, without buses, without enough drivers? We always covered the runs. We never missed a run, any day of the week because we all were out there driving in addition to our office work. Again, my question is, Dr. Cooper, Kathleen, why would you fix something that's not broken? And don't you dare save the money?
I haven't had to save this yet, which I think I got pretty far in the meeting without having to do that. But if we could all manage to be civil, that would be, that would be awesome. If, if we could do that, that'd be great. So. So, um, does anybody else have anything to say about transportation and facilities? Seeing none, we're moving on to finance. Um, there was only one item on the finance, um, meeting that occurred. Oh.
Sorry. One thing.
I, I, yeah, go ahead.
Dr. Cooper, I just would like for you to respond to some of these things. You've been very quiet.
When, when we, um, in our meetings, we have, when we have this sheer volume of people coming in with questions, we were, we provide all responses the following day. I mean, I know that there have been some times when I've spoken up and offered, offered an answer right now. Um, we put them out on the school, school's website the next day. So that's what's gonna happen. Yeah, no problem. That's why half the time you see the top of my grain head instead of my eyes because I'm writing down the things people are saying. So, um, the finance committee meeting. We had a discussion about the way that when kids go to nationals for anything, for anything, the, um, the finance, um, office is finding that she, we feel that it might be something that we need to look at to allow for more equitable, um, money being given to students, um, to cover some of the costs of their, of their trips. What we are doing right now is offering a stipend per day for house, for, for housing, hotel, and a stipend per day for food. And what we're finding is that, um, we're not being provided with adequate. Am I interrupting something? Okay. We're not being provided adequate enough, um, documentation to provide the, um, the, the money back for kids who are eating at, at, um, hotels. Um, some kids are being really smart about it. You know, they, they go and they, they spend some money at the local Target and get, get food delivered so they can have food for breakfast every day. Um, and we, we get, we get the information that we need and you gotta just split, split it in threes and it works fine. And then other kids are coming in, um, with their documentation and their parents' documentation where we're paying for the student and not the parent. And the documentation that comes in sometimes has alcohol on it and sometimes has, you know, um, chicken fingers and fries and, and crab and lobster. And we're supposed to determine how, you know, because it's not just like pay, pay the student $50, up to $50, and we'll just give them $50 and, you know, it's like, it's supposed to be what that child uses. And when those, that documentation comes in, it's very difficult sometimes to figure out how to equitably off, we, we're talking about maybe, um, if there's a way to maybe change it by just offering more, um, as a stipend toward, toward the hotel so we can stop dealing with how to give money back as far as food is concerned or it just, that it needs to be discussed, uh, maybe making a change. And right now, we're in a situation where the only groups that get that help are the ones that ask us. So it's, um, often what I see is like for nationals, for, um, for chorus and choir, we had somebody go to nationals two years ago, three years ago, um, and we paid for some of that person's, um, lodging. And, um, the kids in TSA, Technology Students Association, the kids in FBLA, Future, Future Business Leaders of America, they, they've come to us and say, said, um, we'd like the, the school to support our kids that are going to nationals because it's a, it's a big honor. Um, but, but we don't know, there are some other kids going to national events that maybe aren't getting quite as much, you know, because they're, because their, um, student advisors maybe aren't, um, haven't told us that this is a thing that their kids are doing. You know, maybe, maybe we need to find a way of like maybe identify ahead of time who's eligible instead of just waiting for somebody to ask.
Is it easier to flatline if you just pay for the, um, the hotel?
I think it would be, but, but the thing is, we have to, we have to cap it because some places, some places, it's like, you know, they're, they're going to, they're going to somewhere near, um, near Disney and it's like $400 a night, you know? And sometimes they're going to Tulsa, Oklahoma and it's like, you know, it's like, it's, it's, you know, it's, yeah, it's $125 a night, you know? So we, I think we'd have to still put a cap on it.
And how do you tell the expenses are going up exponentially?
I, I don't know if it's something that we need to discuss in policy or if it's just something that we need to discuss with the, um, with the principals at the, at the middle school and high school. I don't know how, but that, that was what we discussed, like, how do I handle? How do, how does the business office handle these, these tickets that are coming in? I, I said, in the, in the, in the, in the, in the short term, please, please don't issue a check based on a, a receipt that you received that has alcohol on it. You know, I said, at least in the short term, let's not do that.
It's a challenge we always have with per diems. You know, if they're gonna use it because it's there, which is not, um, you know, to our hotel expenses as a company going up.
Did I capture most of the discussion? Okay. So that'll be, that'll be a discussion for another day. But before kids start going away to nationals this year, I'd like to have that resolved so that we can more, more evenly and with certainty hand out some reimbursements for those things. Next meeting is at the end of the month. It's... Am I wrong? No, it's September 26th. Thank you. Um, any comments from the board on what I just said? Any public comment? Policy review. Mr. Scott?
Yes, we had our meeting this evening at 5:30. We discussed great policies. Controlled substances, that is policy 227. Policy 707 is use of school facilities. And 805 is emergency preparedness and response. Our next meeting will be on October 10th.
Okay.
Yeah, if you have any questions about the policies, I can collect it out here.
Okay. And in the interim, did anybody from the board have any questions right now for the policy stuff? Any questions from the public? Or comments from the public? I'm sorry. Seeing none, technology.
We had a meeting on August 22nd.
I have the agenda in front of me, but I don't remember what was discussed.
Yeah. Unified communication system, they're talking about phone video project launched last month. 95% complete. Training, they trained throughout the summer. Um, more training was, uh, was due during the fall for many of the new features that were available. Student devices were all ready. Um, and 160 kids at that time had already pre-picked them up. They were getting ready for final deployment, which obviously they have done already.
Right.
The DBH wireless upgrade was impacted by supply chain issues for replacements. So 100% did not arrive, even though we were way ahead of time ordering them. Um, so maybe late October is what you're looking for because of supply chain issues. Back-to-school verification, 1,600 students completed back-to-school paperwork already at that time for the meeting. Reminder being sent to the parents to submit the rest of it. Grade book iPad insurance, 90% of parents are engaging online at this point, which is really great.
And we lowered the cost of that previous year, right?
Talked about the application for, with, with TransFinder and, uh, I guess it's called School Bus. Um, we talked about that, a thing that we haven't already discussed here this evening. And the summer technology, professional learning, 63 employees took advantage of that over the summer, which was a pretty good engagement from, uh, everybody wanting to do, do a better job with the technologies that's available. Next meeting is the 26th of the evening.
Correct. Um, any questions for Mr. Struble? I know that Mr. Mas, Mr. Mas, our technology director isn't here today. Any public comment? Old business? The TIF update? Hey. Are you gonna give people the, the Cliff Notes version of where we were before now?
Yeah.
As far as reports, okay.
Yes.
You'll do it better than I can.
My name is Jeremy Zabrowski. I'm executive director of Berks County Industrial Development Authority. Um, so I believe you have a packet with just an update on where we're at with the TIF. Just to remind you, in early 2021.
I just forwarded that to the board at the beginning of the meeting, so it's at the top of your email list.
Great. So at, at the beginning of 2021, the Industrial Development Authority came to the school district to Amity Township and to the county with a development project that needed water and sewer expansion to make it work. We had initial discussion with all three taxing bodies and all three taxing bodies said, uh, tax increment financing seems to be an appropriate vehicle to support the expansion of public utilities into this area to open up industrial development as well as this specific project. Uh, so you committed, uh, two members to our TIF committee, which was the first step last year. Uh, Dr. Cooper and Mr. Miller, I believe.
We replaced him.
Replaced him with Mrs. Thompson, but we haven't officially met yet. Uh, pleasure to meet you. Uh, so that was the status as of last year. The TIF committee, which was made up of representatives from the school district, from the township and from the county, uh, were tasked with determining if the TIF made sense to bring back to the respective boards for conversation and the geography of it. So you see up on the wall, the blue outline area, uh, here, let me just come over and point out.
Yeah, thank you.
So this section right here, where you can see proposed, uh, housing development for age-restricted housing, was the TIF area that was agreed upon by the TIF committee as the appropriate area to put under tax increment financing. The quick answer to tax increment financing is you take a piece of land. When you improve it, the property taxes rise. You can take a portion of those property taxes to support public infrastructure that can make the project happen. And so the TIF committee said, this is the geographic boundary that makes sense. And then in the memo, uh, that was from last August, that was the result of the TIF committee and the consensus that came about. At the time, and this still holds true, we'll need to get new bids this year, obviously, with COVID and the impacts from inflation. But we're recommending a 20% TIF, so you would give up 20% of the new taxes. You wouldn't give up any, uh, current taxes that you already get. You give up 20% of that to pay for the water and sewer expansion into that area with the expectation that it would very much pay for itself in less than the 20 years suggested for the TIF. So that's what we came back to the board with in August and you agreed, okay. So that's what we came back to the board with in August, and you agreed, okay, this makes sense, we can continue process. There is no binding vote that you had committed to it, it just said, all of this makes sense, let's continue the process. So here we are, wanted to give you an update today, no action is necessary, as many of you, I'm sure, are aware, getting the permitting and everything else takes time, as well as the design, which was required after we said, okay, this makes sense to move forward, let's finalize the design for the housing units. So today, I'm just giving you an update on where we're at in the process, answer any questions, anything that you may have on it. So the developer who I have with me today, Mr. Flatley, he'll give you an update on the status of the project specifically. I'm giving you the project update on the TIF itself, the financing portion of that. So a cooperation agreement has to be executed with Amity Township, and then the school district and the county would come onboard with that. All three taxing bodies have seen a draft of it and have returned their first red lines, their first revisions. We're in the process of seeing how to merge those three red lines, and that's where we're at on that side. We've also talked to some banks, we have a couple of them ready to bid in on the debt so that we can get a competitive rate or a rate that makes sense for all three taxing bodies. Once the final permitting is complete, then we would seek adoption of the actual TIF, and this would be the binding resolutions that each taxing body would make to join in on the two, onto the TIF, and then we would go forward with the financing. The timing for that is expected to be late fall or possibly spring of twenty-twenty-three. So with that, I'll have Mr. Flatley give an update on the project itself, which will give insight into the timing as the IDA season.
Thank you.
Good evening. Tom Flatley with American Land Development. We are the developer and landowner of the project, which is called Highland Place. I don't know if it was named last time we came in and gave a presentation. So we partnered with TH, THP Homes is actually going to be the builder for the project. We'll give you a high, high-level overview, so it's three hundred and forty age-restricted development, single-family homes and twins. Obviously, there's no burden on the school districts, it can be fifty-five and over. And where we're at with the TIF process is, as Jeremy explained, this area does not have infrastructure where this project's going to be built. It's lacking in water and sewer. I'm sure you're familiar with the area, so at Island Pizza at four-twenty-two, that's where the current water extension line for PA America is. So the TIF will be paying, the infrastructure that will be going in for the water will run up Lime Kiln Road, it'll cross underneath four-twenty-two, and then run up Lime Kiln Road, and then head down Amity Park Road. And the sewer extension is currently at Bel Air Estates, which is on Lime Kiln, it'll then run up Lime Kiln and down Amity Park. So with the expansion of water and sewer, it's going to bring about six hundred undeveloped acres online for future development, and inside that is our project, which is about a hundred and twenty acres. For the off-site entitlements, we started since our last meeting, we went, you know, full tilt with our engineering firms. So McCarthy Engineering has gotten PA America to give us a green light on the water line design. We're working with PennDOT to get the HOP, which allows them to bore underneath four-twenty-two. And then for the sewer design, we're working with the onsite project design with Amity Township, which that'll determine the off-site sewer extension. So that's forthcoming. I suspect by the end of the year, we will have entitlements in place, or we're very close to. And then obviously, with Jeremy's help, we're going to be working with potential lenders for the TIF financing. And in the packet that Dr. Cooper sent over, there's actually elevations and floor plans, which you didn't have before for THP Homes. Jim, I want to take a look at that, I'll give you a snapshot. They're actually the units they're planning on building. I think that's it for me. Do you have any questions about the, where we stand with the entitlement process?
If you could share with the board, either Tom or Jeremy, with regard to any implications should this development not happen after the water and sewer come in for some unknown reason, what type of implications would it have in the district with paying back any of the TIF? If you could explain that to them.
Yeah, I'll explain that. So the, the TIF is for the public improvements, the utilities that are going in, so the sewer would belong to the authority, the Amity Township Sewer Authority, the water would belong to PA Americas. The TIF only pays for up to the site, it does not go into the site, that's the developer's responsibility, that is not the responsibility of the TIF. The worst-case scenario, I'm an Industrial Development Authority, so I'm always looking at worst-case scenario to make sure everyone is happy on this side of the fence, on the, our side of the fence. Worst-case scenario, if this project were to get developed, you now have a sewer and a water line there, but you don't have something to pay for it. So the, the agreement as currently stated would be that the township and the school district would split a guarantee to have the responsibility to pay for that. Now, any investment that would occur in that site, any increases in property taxes that would occur in that site, would go towards paying down on the TIF. And so it's not, it's very unlikely to be a zero sum. The other component is, we're recommending that the TIF wouldn't be financed until all of the approvals, the entitlements, as Mr. Flatley had talked about, have been granted, and they are preparing to break ground. We would coordinate so that we would not draw down a single dollar before that. The other way we're managing and mitigating risk is that the bank itself will require an engineer to review their work to make sure there's no performance risk. If someone is doing something wrong, the TIF will fund it. It'll be the responsibility of the developer to build it appropriately and correctly. But, to your original question, Dr. Cooper, the highest risk is if nothing happens in the project and the TIF were somehow financed, it would be the responsibility of the township and the school district in a shared fashion to pay off that debt.
One of the big factors that we're taking into this was, was the fact that we're in bringing tax dollars that aren't going to impact the school. That's a huge decision process, so not having the TIF funded at all prior to all those pieces of paper being peace crossed and eyes dotted with what I was looking for, I don't know about anybody else, but it's like, that's a, that's a big key there. Without that, it, it works still, but it doesn't work. Does that make sense? Mathematically, it doesn't work, but economically, it happens that way. So, you know, that's, that's a really good piece. I, I did a question, what kind of impact has your overall cost of your project been affected by the increase of interest rates that we're currently at? When we first started talking about this, that wasn't the case, we weren't having interest rates issues. Is that a big impact? Percentage basis, do you think it gets added?
I mean, on the finance side, I would say the interest rates are a smaller impact than I would say the proper, the components pricing, you know, the supply risk, supply pricing.
Can, can I ask, so, anything in this timeline about the layout? If I'm wrong, please correct me. So next thing we're doing is we're merging the red line copies as best we can to meet the concerns, to protect all parties, county, township, district. And then, once that's done, those documents will be, once, once that process is over, it might take a couple of drafts, they will be brought to the different entities to be approved. And then, then the plan will be put together involving the, the fine-tuning of what needs to be finished for permitting and the plan for what is going to be presented to the banks.
I would say that's very close, there's just a couple of key differences, so.
And you didn't say I'm wrong, it's fine. I'm used to it.
No, the, it's the Right Track, but I would say a number of those things are happening at the same time. They're not necessarily sequential. So the agreement that's being redlined right now is happening at the same time as all of the permits are getting approved, at the same time as we've already talked to banks about this is coming.
Okay. But we are going to have to revise the, the, the plan for how much to borrow because of what you said, said before, maybe it might be happening.
It's possible, because we'll have to go out for new bids to, we put, we try to be as conservative as possible, so I'm not fully convinced that we will have to change the pricing and the thresholds that we talked about. But it, it may adjust, you're right, it may adjust, but I'm not right now expecting that. The resolution in the cooperation agreement, that's what we're redlining and working on, if the entitlements, the permitting, for whatever reason, doesn't occur, if the home builder, for whatever reason, pulls out, those would never come in front of the board for action, because we would not act on it until we were certain that the development would occur. So.
And that, that timeline makes sense for all parties, I think. Might make things a little harder for you, but, but I think it makes sense.
We want to be certain it's a, it's a fundable project.
Any of the other board members have questions on the TIF?
I just really have a question about the development.
Absolutely.
You're going to use a hundred and twenty acres of that, six hundred for this fifty-five and over?
Correct.
Right?
Yep.
So we're bringing up all this water and sewer lines up to that six hundred acres, but you're only, it's only going to be concentrated in that hundred and twenty that you're developing. I guess my question is, what's the zoning for that area?
That's, that's the question. Yeah, that's a good question.
Because one of what we're trying to help with taxation, we actually had commercial development. So any of that area developments?
So it actually, so it actually, so everything in the blue is actually part of the PBOI zoning district. That was put into place, it's called, seven, eight years ago, and the intent was to appeal to commercial development. And there has been a lot of activity at Amity Township about interested parties that are looking to go back into that area, whether it's light manufacturing. During that time period, we went into the township and asked for consideration for age-restricted residential development, because that was in demand at the time. Commercial was not taking off like it is currently. I mean, you see warehousing and all sorts of stuff, just being revealed. So the absolute intent, and I suspect it will play out, is that now that water and sewer will be to that area, it'll be much more appealing for commercial development.
That, that's a good question, and it's the whole premise of the Industrial Development Authority participating in a housing project. We saw this.
It's an understanding, live in there, have a shot, whatever.
That's correct. Amity Township has expressed through its zoning and through its, that this is an area that is interested in seeing commercial development. They allowed this age-restricted housing overlay to try to get the ball rolling for commercial development, because over and over again, they've heard and seen that utility, the lack of utilities in that area is the main gap to getting it developed.
Yeah, I know, and I've said a couple of ways, actually, with the surface of development.
But that's exactly why the IDA is involved, is we want to see, we want to foster commercial industrial development.
Yeah, just wanted to check. That's right, thanks.
Any board members have any other questions? I'm happy to see some racial movement on this. I know that, I know that this, this beginning of the process is taking, was going to take some time, I knew that, but I'm happy to see some movement.
Yeah, all of these take time, I'm working, we have an industrial part we're developing, and it's taken us twelve months to get our first review of some of our permits.
Excellent.
It's just a slow market right now.
Yeah, yeah, for sure, yeah. Okay, thank you so much for my time to come and wait to have your, have your turn at that. Thank you so much. The only other thing on the agenda is.
Is there a public comment?
There will be in just a second, as soon as I'm done with old business. And the only other thing was promotion, was for the, for the meeting minutes, do any of the board have any comments, questions on that? Any comments on old business? Did you, you already had gotten up to speak once.
Different issue.
I, I understand that, but that's not.
Different issue.
That's not the way that this works.
I have three minutes. I have three minutes. So I just want to be clarified, because I wasn't, I wasn't privy to this knowledge, but am I understanding that we are paying our taxpayer dollars to a project that is funding a fifty-five-plus community that we are paying for out of our school taxes? That's all I want to clarify.
No, but I, but I can, we can spell out a little bit of what the TIF is about. The actual TIF proposal was part of the documentation that's in the back of the, back of the room, and it was part of the agenda that's posted online, but I can, I will answer that question when I put the answers to the.
So this has already been voted on and approved?
Yeah, two years ago.
Okay. I just want you all to know, these people up here who are your board members are not making wise decisions for us, especially this Tanya Bell, who's been on her phone and barking at the house.
That's funny, because I'm not Tanya Bell.
Or whatever. Whatever.
I appreciate it up until now, again, that if we could just speak things civil, I'd really appreciate it. Are you, do you want to talk about the TIF or something else?
Julia, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Just missed that.
Yeah.
We've got to stop attacking people personally in these meetings.
She's been on her phone the entire.
First of all, you don't know, I can't get Wi-Fi, I'm looking at the agenda.
Not you, this one over here, I'm sorry.
No, you totally pointed at me, I'm getting the agenda.
I'm the other one.
It's enough, it's enough.
Hold on.
No, it's enough.
I apologize.
I'm raising my hand.
Wrong woman.
I'm raising my hand.
It was the woman next to you, I apologize.
I'd like to have the opportunity to speak, please. We just got to stop, got to keep this down. There's no anchors.
You're not making the right decisions for our people.
Nobody, you weren't part of any of the meetings, and we're more than happy to sit down with you.
I've been part of some of the meetings.
We're more than happy to share with you.
More than this charade, who just got nominated.
We're more than happy to share with you, but that's not what I'm talking about. TIF projects, be happy to sit down, all the benefits, the additional tax dollars, all those things with you, I promise, be happy to do that. What I'm upset about is, is that nobody here is screaming at anybody in here. Nobody's screaming at anybody. I can't hear you, you're screaming at me, because I'm thinking about you screaming at me. I'm not degradating you, I'm not insulting you and telling you stupid, I'm not calling anybody up here. I just think we need to keep it professional, so we can have an opportunity to have, so we can have an opportunity to have a conversation that makes sense. You may not agree with me, and that's okay. Disagreement's not, we have disagreements in this board, we never mistreat each other, ever. And in my company, I can promise you now, you wouldn't be in my meeting if anybody raises her voice to another person in the meeting. It's not going to happen. It's a hostile environment, and I'm not going to allow it. We can't have this. Let's keep it civil, please. We want to hear you, we do hear you, we may not agree with you, and that's fine.
She just told me I didn't have a.
I see.
At the beginning of the meetings, you mentioned that this was one person.
It's a different scenario.
I understand, but.
We have a right to speak on every subject, it's common.
She let you speak, so.
You guys can look at the people that are talking to instead of staring at your computers all the time. And I apologize for her.
I, I, I would like it, I would like, I, I, I would like that to be over for right now, I would like to hear what Mr. Cockle has to say.
Oh, you're going to have to give us your name.
Shane Cockle, Gary Geyer, San Marino. My question is on this TIF. I understand how it works, it's not really made for a development, for housing, it's more to bring business in, which is going to, you know, bring a lot more taxes with actually a benefit to the community. If, I don't understand why we would be doing it on a housing project, especially if you're going to do a housing project, a hundred and twenty acres, then fill in four hundred and eighty of industrial or commercial, I mean, you're going to have fifty-five and older people loving that area, and then next thing you know, there's going to be tractor-trailers, there's going to be all kinds of problems at the intersection, and that's not why they could bid there. They, I mean, this would be a beautiful spot to put a housing about there. I don't think the school district should be spending one penny of it. First, the township, Amity Township's going to have to okay it.
Correct.
And once they okay it, any developer would love to have a piece of property like that. That's a, that is, you know, like hitting the lottery, they're very hard to find property like that in our area. There is no need for the school district to be funding it. You guys could save millions of dollars on this sewer and water project by just saying, we, we agree, this would be great for our community, but we don't think our taxpayers should be funding the sewer and water. We don't do that with anything else, I don't understand why we would be paying for water in a sewer project.
We're not funding it.
And so.
Twenty percent.
Twenty percent of future taxes, plus, there's no impact on the school. Do you understand?
Yeah, but you can't, I know you understand.
It's huge, it's a big difference.
But they would do it anyway.
What do you mean?
No, they wouldn't.
They wouldn't, it sat for nine years.
It sat for, it sat, it sat for nine years, nothing happened.
Nobody's done anything with it, we need the businesses to come in, you put something like that up there, the fact that the water and power's there is going to bring everybody else. going to bring everybody else, that's what's going to bring the other businesses in, that's been zoned for for eight or nine years already, because it's sat there, nothing.
Right.
We're getting nothing out of it. So the future taxes on that one piece, right?
Right.
That's going to be 20%, and that's going to go to repay some of that back. And then, all the other 480 acres are going to be available for additional taxes as well. So it's a huge impact for our overall taxes, and we're not funding it, we're funding it with future taxes, which right now, it's an empty piece of dirt.
I heard we were going to...
100% is zero, 20% is zeros, zero.
No.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard you say.
Yeah, and I will use it. It is confusing. Very confusing. We talked, we talked about this over the course of like three or four months, because there's a lot to it that we needed to be educated on before we agreed to even just appoint people to be part of exploratory...
And what I would say, there was a 55 and older community going into Amity Township.
Correct.
They were working on that for 17 years.
I know.
They just pulled out.
Oh, did they really?
They're going to be putting flats and single homes.
Oh, really?
They're good. The 55 and older are not union, Pennsylvania, they're all heading down to the south, mostly the far east, so. They might have that other problem where 55 and older communities are not going to work, and you're going to have to work right there, and then they'll say...
That's no classic, it doesn't negatively affect us. If they don't have, yeah, if they don't have the, if they don't have folks to move in, it never goes anywhere, and nothing happens.
It's really confusing.
Yeah.
I forgot, but I'm in the old community for 15 years, that was back in 2014, or so, third of the state, you could be 25, 55 people.
So not all of them have to fly.
And I've been...
They were smart, they were.
I did give, I did give Mr. Cockle a little bit of leeway, because he is, he is on the zoning board for Amity Township, but now your time is up, and I'll just stop.
And I would like to clarify, that was the first time I heard the name of the development, and that is what I was looking up.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
All right. And I'd like to know if anybody else has any comments on the TIF. Okay, seeing none, we have nothing under new business, and now it's time for public comments on any issue.
Are we allowed to have to come up?
No, no. Somebody did, but you are not. I'm sorry, you can follow the rules.
Yeah.
Any others? Nope, nope, I don't want to talk to you. I did get your last night before the meeting, just letting you know. Absolutely fine, I thought that that was the case, so...
I don't have a physical paper to hand.
Yeah, you can or not, it's fine, I've got it, so, we're good.
Perfect. So, last meeting, I went ahead and gave a snapshot on what we're going to be dealing with, unfortunately regarding Title IX. And I went ahead and presented the Joel Doe case versus the Boyer Town area school district. Dr. Richard Failey and Dr. Cooper and Wayne Volley were also involved in that case. This pertaining to a handful of children in the Boyer Town School District suing the district for privacy infringement. According to Title IX, which is outlined in the actual case, I have extra copies if anybody wants to read through some of the kids' account during a court hearing, but Title IX provides that no person in the United States shall, on the basis of sex, be excluded from participation in, be denied the benefits of, or be subject to discrimination under any education program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. And the current administration's currently trying to add gender identity into that mix. But the reason why I'm presenting this case to the board is because it's something to familiarize yourselves with before you have to make a decision, and half the community comes out saying, hey, we didn't know, because Boyer Town did not notify the parents that that they were allowing the opposite sex inside restrooms and locker rooms, therefore children responding in that their privacy was violated. And the fed for Dr. Cooper, he didn't make that decision, but it was the superintendent at that time that did, and he followed suit. It was based on the Dear Colleague letter that rolled out through the Obama administration. And according to, to the superintendent at Boyer Town, such students need not dress or groom as the opposite sex, and they need not to change their names or pronouns, receive hormone treatments, or undergo surgery. All that matters is that what makes those students most comfortable. So Dr. Cooper went ahead and allowed students to go ahead and change in the locker room and use the facilities like the restrooms of the opposite sex, making the handful of these students uncomfortable. And it gives you a count of what they experienced and how they addressed it, and something that I thought was pretty egregious is that the superintendent said, in the meantime, I just need you to unfortunately tolerate it. He also stated, you know, try to make it as natural as you possibly can, and I think that's absolutely egregious. And again, I'm only bringing this up because I try to get ahead of these things, the school boards are going to be making these type of decisions, this is the last night that you can actually protest against adding gender ideology into Title IX. If you go ahead and fill in, I sent it not this, not yesterday, but the last meeting, if you click the link and add a personal comment, if you're not for it, I highly recommend you do that. This is a very serious topic, please read the case.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, there was something? No, okay, okay. I just, I know at the beginning of the board meeting oh so long ago, we had a, we had a moment of silence for a student who passed away, and I just want to say, I just want to say that, you know, we all struggle, for sure, and, you know, if you are a person who is struggling, there is no shame in reaching out for help. I think that mental health issues, I think that we should be able to find that it's just as natural to reach out for mental health assistance as it is if you've got an ear infection and go to the doctor. If, if you can't be that person, if, if, I would love it if everybody had parents that they could be that person for their kids, but if you know somebody who can't be that person for their kids, try to be that person for that kid. It's important. So, I just wanted to make that comment. Do we have any, anything else for the good of the cause before we're done? Do I have a motion or adjournment? Is that a second? And we are done, thank you everybody.